Good afternoon, everyone. We'll start this meeting of Leicestershire County Council, Wednesday 14th of May. First of all, the prayer, please. Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light. Enlighten our minds to receive your guidance, so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of this county, whether as elected member or as an officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. Evacuation procedure. In the event of having to evacuate the council chamber, would everyone leave by one of the two exits at the rear of the chamber? Officers will be on hand to assist any disabled persons. Mobile phones. May I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off, so that they will not disturb this meeting? Agenda item number one, to elect a chairman. I invite nominations. Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like to nominate Paul Harrison for that position. Reserve my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Do you have a second, or? Mr Vaughan.
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I invite further nominations. Mrs Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I move that Mr Joe Orson be elected chairman for the period until the next annual meeting of the council.
Mr Smith.
Happy to second that, Mr Chairman.
Obviously, I don't believe there are any other nominations, I'm just looking around, but there seems to be two nominations, so obviously to inform the obvious, that Mr Paul Harrison and myself have been duly proposed and seconded. There is one vacancy to fill, so in accordance with item four of standing order 27, a secret ballot will now take place. Members will find ballot papers in front of them. Rosemary and Joe will collect the ballot papers. And Lauren, Rosemary and Joe will count ballot papers at the desk in the well. To be duly elected, the number of votes received by the chairman needs to exceed half the numbers of persons voting. The chief executive will announce the result of the ballot in accordance with item five of standing order 27. This is final and conclusive. I would you...
Chairman, the ballot papers have been counted, and there are 16 votes for Mrs Seaton, 25 Chairman, the ballot papers have been counted, and there are 16 votes for yourself, 25 votes for Mr P Harrison, and two abstentions. In accordance with standing order 27.5, the return is final and conclusive. And Mr Harrison is therefore elected as chairman for municipal year 2025-26. Correction, 12 abstentions, sorry. 16, 25, 12.
I invite Mr Harrison to join myself and the chief executive to make the declaration of acceptance of office. I'm not sure who Mr Harrison is yet. Oh, he's there! Seamless! Seamless! My fault, yes, we have, yeah, sorry about that.
I, Paul Harrison, of 175 Forest Road, Colville, in the county of Leicestershire, having been elected to the office of chairman of the Leicestershire County Council, do hereby declare that I take this said office upon myself, and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof, according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the county council's code of conduct for elected members in the performance of my functions in that office, dated this day, the 14th of May, 2025.
I'm just reading the script now. It's the obvious, but congratulations.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Congratulations. We had a brief of conversations on Saturday, I believe.
We did, yeah. It was in your car.
It was a good conversation, that's right. And, yeah, so, like I say, well done, and enjoy your year.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Okay, agenda item number... Sorry, that's the white mark already. I thank the council for electing me, and I thank Mr Orson, who is gone. For his services as chairman. I think everyone knows how hard he's been working, and what a good job he's done. So, in terms of... I'd like to ask, is this here? Go on to this. Thank you. Call Mr Dan Harrison, please.
Is this in regard to the next candidate? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Thank you, yes. I am very pleased to be able to congratulate you, Joe, on his fantastic work, as I get my proper details in front of me now I can talk. I'm very grateful to Joe for carrying out the role of chairman over the past year. Joe has been a real sense of service to the civic life of our county, and at this county council, which has been demonstrated through his dedication to the role. I now speak for us all when I say that members and officers of the county council value the work that Joe has carried out on behalf of the county council. I'm sure everyone will agree that Joe has represented the county council with dignity and sincerity throughout his very successful two years. Now that I speak for all members, when I thank you most sincerely for the way you've undertaken your civic duties on behalf of service of the county council and to Leicestershire community, much appreciated, and you can look back with great pride and satisfaction with your term of office. Thank you very much indeed. Well done, Joe. Thank you.
Mrs Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment. I'd like to take this opportunity to add my own personal thanks, and those of the Conservative group, for Joe for his time as chairman. Joe, in his year, has represented the council at 154 events across the county, and has been an excellent ambassador for the county council. The role of chairman represents ceremonial tradition, and that is why so many organisations wish to invite the chairman. Regardless of the size of the organisation or the size of the event, having the chairman attend provides a real sense of occasion and civic pride. I would like to conclude by expressing the thanks of my group, past and present, for everything that Joe has done for the county council over the past year. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Mullane, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I'd also take this opportunity to express the gratitude of the Lib Dem group to Joe Orson for his work as chairman. Over the last year, it involves a lot of hours, a lot of visiting places all across the county of Leicestershire, so I also join in thanking you for your work and service to the county of Leicestershire.
I'd like to give you a presentation, Mr Orson, if you'd like to stand.
Thank you very much.
Is it the wrong way round? There you go.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And would you like to make a speech, sir?
I say a few words.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I've got nothing prepared, so sometimes I can go on a bit longer when I've got nothing prepared, but I will promise you that. Obviously, we've got a lot of business, but thank you very much for the thank yous. And looking back over the 12 months, I can't believe how quick it's gone. It's just flown by. Thoroughly enjoyed going round the county, representing Leicestershire County Council. I've got so many thanks to give, it's unreal, really, but... So I won't even attempt, other than to what I call democratic staff in this council, led by Graham and his team. I can't sing their praises high enough, as you'll find out. Absolutely superb support, so thank you to all Graham's depart. Thank you to all of you for supporting me over the twelve months, and I'll still be around, so... But I might be a bit quiet today, but then I'll be back in another way. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mr D Harrison, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to propose to you and the council, Mr Andrew Hamilton Gray, and I'll reserve my comments till later. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
And do you have a second?
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
So, are there any further nominations? Sorry, Mrs Taylor.
I would like to move that Mrs Brenda Seaton be elected vice-chairman for the period until the next annual meeting of the council. I'm delighted to nominate Brenda Seaton for the office of Vice-Chairman of the County Council for the ensuring year. Brenda is a long-standing member of the county council, having been elected in 2017, representing the Thurston Ridgeway Electoral Division. Brenda has held a number of positions on the council during her time, including being a Cabinet Support Member and Chairman of the Children and Families Odeon Scrutiny Committee. I hope members will join me in supporting her nomination.
Mr Smith.
Again, I'm happy to second Mrs Seaton for Vice Chair.
Okay, so, as we have Mr Hamilton Gray and Mrs Seaton being duly proposed and seconded, there is one vacancy to fill, so in accordance with item four of standing order 27, a secret ballot will now take place. Members will find ballot papers in front of them. Thank you. Rosemary and Joe will collect the ballot papers. Lauren, Rosemary and Joe will count ballot papers at the desk in the well. To be duly elected, the number of votes received by the vice-chairman needs to exceed half the numbers of persons voting. Chief Executive will announce the result of the ballot in accordance with item five of standing 27. That is final and conclusive.
Yes, please.
votes for Mr Hamilton Gray, and 12 abstentions. In accordance with standing order 27.5, the return is final and conclusive. Mr Hamilton Gray is elected as Vice Chairman for the council for the municipal year 2025-26.
I, Andrew Charles Hamilton Gray, of 42 The Gate, Woodside Village, Louthborough, in the county of Leicestershire, having been elected to the office of Vice Chairman for Leicestershire County Council, do hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself, and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof accordingly, to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the county council's code of conduct and elected members in the performance of my functions in that office.
I invite Mr Hamilton to thank his proposer and seconder.
Agenda item number three, Chairman's announcements. Armed Forces Week. As a prelude to Armed Forces Day, there will be an Armed Forces Day flag-raising ceremony at our Stand Easy Memorial on Monday, the 23rd of June, at 10:30 AM. All members will be invited, and I do hope that you will be able to join me for what I am sure will be a successful event to recognise our armed forces. On Saturday, 28th of June, together with the Lord Lieutenant and Lord Mayor of Leicester, I will be attending Armed Forces Day Parade in Leicester City. The parade will include service personnel, veterans and cadets, who will march through the streets of Leicester. Following the parade, there will be an outside drumhead service in Jubilee Square, and I would ask all members, if they can, to come into the city and watch this fitting tribute to our armed forces and veterans.
Chairman, the ballot papers have been counted, and there are 16 votes for Mrs Seaton, 25 votes for Mr Hamilton Gray, and 12 abstentions. In accordance with standing order 27.5, the return is final and conclusive. Mr Hamilton Gray is elected as Vice Chairman for the council for the municipal year 2025-26.
I, Andrew Charles Hamilton Gray, of 42 The Gate, Woodside Village, Louthborough, in the county of Leicestershire, having been elected to the office of Vice Chairman for Leicestershire County Council, do hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself, and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof accordingly, to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the county council's code of conduct and elected members in the performance of my functions in that office.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Well done.
I invite Mr Hamilton to thank his proposer and seconder.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Agenda item number three, Chairman's announcements. Armed Forces Week. As a prelude to Armed Forces Day, there will be an Armed Forces Day Flag-Raising Ceremony at our Stand Easy Memorial on Monday, the 23rd of June, at 10:30 AM. All members will be invited, and I do hope that you will be able to join me for what I am sure will be a successful event to recognise our armed forces. On Saturday, 28th of June, together with the Lord Lieutenant and Lord Mayor of Leicester, I will be attending Armed Forces Day Parade in Leicester City. The parade will include service personnel, veterans and cadets, who will march through the streets of Leicester. Following the parade, there will be an outside drumhead service in Jubilee Square, and I would ask all members, if they can, to come into the city and watch this fitting tribute to our armed forces and veterans. County Service. I will be hosting a county service later in the year, and all members will receive an invitation in due course.
Chairman, for agenda item number four, I present the report of the returning officer on the person who's duly elected to the council at the elections held on May 1st, 2025. Copies of the report and the results were circulated with the agenda.
The chairman will welcome all new members. Agenda item number five, minutes. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 19th of February, 2025, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read, confirmed and signed. The vice-chairman will second.
I second, Mr Chairman.
Agenda item number six, declarations of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. I assume that Mr Kay Crook, as chairman-elect of the local Pension Committee, will declare a disclosable pecuniary interest in the report of the independent remuneration panel, and will leave the room during consideration of that item. Are there any other declarations? Take that as a no. Agenda item number seven, questions asked under standing order 7, 1, 2 and 5. The questions and replies set out in the order paper will be taken as read and entered into the minutes. There are no supplementary questions. Question by Mr Bray. Seventeen, sorry. Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, to receive position statements from members of the cabinet. There are no position statements. There are no position statements. To consider reports of the cabinet, scrutiny commission, scrutiny committees and other bodies. Agenda item number nine, reports of the cabinet. Principal speakers, move of the motion. Not sure who that is. Mrs Taylor? Okay. Mrs Taylor will move, and Mr Poland will second.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I move that the council meetings in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven be held on the dates as printed in the order paper.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I second the motion.
Thank you. We will now take a vote on the motion. All in favour, please raise your hands. Okay, any against? No, unanimous, thank you. Agenda item number ten, reports of the constitution committee. Reports of the independent remuneration panel. Mrs Taylor will move, and Mr Poland will second.
I move the report of the independent remuneration panel as printed on the order paper, under A, B, C and D.
Mr Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you. All in favour, show your hands, please. Thank you very much. Any against? It's carried, thank you very much. Agenda item number eleven, appointments in accordance with item eleven of standing order four. To appoint a leader. So, Mr Bone?
I confirm I will move the motion on the order paper, thank you.
Mr Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion, just to make it clear, is to appoint Dan Harrison. To appoint the leader of the council for the period into the next annual general meeting of the council. All in favour, raise your hands. Keep them up, thank you. All against, please? Three, okay. Yep, motion carried, thank you very much. This one here. Motion two, Mr De Haversen, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's a great honour and privilege to be the leader of Leicestershire County Council. I humbly accept the office, it is very important. I'd like to thank all my colleagues here, who fought so hard and brilliantly to win their seats, and it's made a significant difference to the landmark of Leicestershire. I'd like to look across at former old colleagues and consolidate, console those who've lost. It's not nice, nobody wants to lose, but politics has always a winner and a loser, and that's how it works. Reform now, we're already striking out, making history at this very moment. We are the first council in Leicestershire, and probably the first county council in the whole of the country to appoint a reform leader. So, well done, and thanks to all of you, well done. Thank you, Mr Chairman, thank you.
Mr De Haversen will move, and Mr Abbott will second.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Let it be noted that the leader proposes to point members to, named on list, attached to the order paper, members of the cabinet, thank you.
Mr Abbott, second, please.
I will second that, yes.
Moving on, agenda item number twelve, appointments in accordance with items twelve and thirteen of standing order four. A, political balance and allocation of committee seats, report of the chief executive. Mr Abbott will move, please.
Yes, I propose that move.
Okay, Mr Poland?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I second the motion.
That the council's political balance, following the results of the local election held on first of May, twenty twenty-five, be noted. That the allocation of seats on those committees, subject to political balance arrangements, be approved. All in favour? Show your hands, please, and keep them up. Does it move? Item twelve A, if you'd like some moments just to think about it. That the council's political balance, following the results of the local election held on first of May, twenty twenty-five, be noted.
Chairman, point of information, if I may. I'm aware that one of the Liberal Democrat members resigned the whip at her borough council on Monday night, so I'm just wondering whether the calculation here at eleven for Liberal Democrats is still right. Thank you.
Mr Chairman, maybe I can help us, the Liberal Democrat group whip. The Liberal Democrat group is as elected on the first of May here at County Hall. So, political balance is correct.
So, all in favour, please? Do you want to think about it? Right, let's do it again, all in favour?
Twelve A.
Twelve A, still on twelve A? Sounds no better, how's that? I can do that. How's that? Fantastic. Okay. All against, please, twelve A? It's carried, thank you. Part B then, the allocation of seats on those committees, subject to political balance arrangements, be approved. All in favour? No? We've done that one? Okay, that's what I was talking about. Oh, I see. Ah, I see. Sorry, guys, it'll be fine. Okay, twelve B, to appoint members of the scrutiny commission, boards and committees. So, motion one, the chairman will note that in accordance with standing order twenty-eight, he is inviting proposals, each of which is in form on a list of candidates nominated for the vacancies to be filled. Two lists have been received, the chairman will ask members to move and second their list. Mr Abbott, please.
I'd like to move that motion, please.
And Mr Pugsley?
Just a second, Mr Pugsley. That the membership of the scrutiny commission, boards and committees are set out in list two, and the chairman-elect and spokespersons named in list three A, attached to the order paper, be approved. So, Mr Pugsley?
I second the motion, Mr Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr Poland, please.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move an amendment, please, to list three B, submitted by the Conservative group. Just to make my comments now, if I may. Obviously, I'd first of all like to start by congratulating Reform and Mr Harrison on becoming the largest party in this chamber. That is no small achievement, and I do congratulate you for that. It was short of a majority, but you are the largest party. That's why we as a group felt it was important that we gave you the opportunity to forward administration, and we did that, and we respect that. But you are short of a majority, and I think you also need to be reflected in the political make-up of the committees. This is the reason why we proposed conservative members for chair for that balance, so that you have the executive authority, but then we are a check and balance to that. I note with interest that the substantive list includes a number of Lib Dems as chairman, which bearing in mind they're not even the official opposition, struck me as very unusual. If, I don't know if any deal has been done, maybe it's a coincidence, I don't know that. I just note with interest that that is the case. So, I think we need to be reasonable about this, I think we need to be adult about this, we need to listen to the people of Leicestershire and hear what they've said. They've said they want reform as an administration, we respect that, and we've shown that we respect that. We now ask you to respect that as well by voting for our amendment and having the conservative list, thank you.
Mrs Taylor?
I'll second the motion of the list three B and reserve my right to speak.
All in favour of list three A? Sorry, Craig.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I totally agree with what Mr Poland just said there. It does seem very strange that the official opposition were not consulted and offered a position on scrutiny, especially with the other party obviously now controlling the exec. One could be forgiven for perhaps thinking that there's been sort of some backroom deal gone, maybe, in exchange, I don't know what, for perhaps the Liberal Democrats uncharacteristically sitting on their hands and doing nothing. But I must be reminded of a previous leader of the county council that referred to the Liberal Democrat leader as the milk-tray man, I believe it was. Perhaps these days I think it's more comparison, is the man from Del Monte, he say yes? But, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Well, isn't it funny, it's two thousand and nine I got here, and for year after year after year, we had to listen to the most arrogant of noxious administration, not giving anybody else the skin off their, skin off, the droppings off their nose, frankly. Well, you, yes, but you've also been rejected massively by the people of Leicestershire. If you had have come forward, if you had have come forward with a proposition to say, in the light of the fact that the council is balanced, let's share things out, and it'll be all good to the people. But no, no, you didn't try to do that. Like kids in a sweet shop, you tried to grab all the goodies for yourself. Michael, just to confirm my proposals to you before our meeting, you could have five chairs of scrutiny, equally eleven thousand five hundred and ninety pounds for your group. This is what has come forward from these people over here. So, this is not about sharing things out, this is about trying to keep left, having had the most disastrous election result, having led the Conservatives to the most disastrous result in the history of this county, they're now wanting to try and keep hold of a few goodies on the table. Let's not pretend it's anything else, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bray.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'll offer you my warmest support for your becoming chairman, I hope you will embrace that in the, across, as previous chairs have. I'm curious, because on Sunday, the leader, national leader of the Lib Dems, Sir Ed Davey, apparently launched Reform Watch, according to the report in the Guardian newspapers. I'm very surprised by Mr Bray seconding the, well, not yet, but it's on the order paper. It's on the order paper. But, yeah, but, okay, but the proposed, the proposal that was, that you haven't made. And because locally in my area, a number of Lib Dem councillors have actually quit the Lib Dems in the last few days. Actually, three, I believe. And it may well be that you think that you're the second largest party in Leicestershire, but actually you're the third by a long way, in terms of the popular vote and in the number of seats that you have. So, what concerns me, though, is, and I do agree with Sir Ed Davey, I agree that many people, including employees of this council, have been alarmed by the member for Clacton comments, and what this might mean for the residents and the vulnerable people of Leicestershire going forward. And so I am concerned about that, and I'm concerned about others offering support. So, thank you, Chair, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Malaney.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So, our position is quite simple, no party formed a majority, but there was clearly one party that was much larger than any other party, and therefore they are forming the administration. We, however, are here to fight for the policies that we were elected as Liberal Democrats, that's what we will be doing in this council chamber, fighting to get the roads and pavements repaired, special educational needs, getting the support it needs, sorting out the flooding problems, dealing with the, trying to restore bus services that we believe were important that were cut. That's what we're here for, we're here on the policy agenda. We're not here to get involved in a dispute between Conservatives, former Conservatives, Reform. We are standing on the policies that we fought for, that's what we will all return to this council chamber for, that's what we'll all campaign for. And as for the comment from Mr Smith, all I'll say is, only one of us has been a selected candidate for a Nigel Farage party, and it wasn't me.
Thank you very much, thank you. So, thank you for that. It's all in favour of? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Thank you, I'm finding myself actually agreeing with Michael. We were also elected on the policies that we fought for, and fifteen of us were returned on those policies. So, we're here to do exactly the same as you, Michael and the Lib Dems. And I think we just need to be clear, Reform were the largest party, and that's why they formed the administration, and we respect that, that's why we didn't vote against it. But we also have to remember that all those people that voted, only thirty-two percent of those people voted for Reform, sixty-eight percent voted for other parties. So, I think we need to be aware of what the people of Leicestershire have actually said. So, I would appreciate if the leader could answer why two members of the Lib Dem, who are not the official opposition, are being given chairmanships of overview and scrutiny groups, and no positions have been offered to the official opposition. I would appreciate the leader actually answering that question for me today.
Thank you.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I think it's self-evident by how you've behaved today, and how you've always behaved with criticism, and your attitude, it's as simple as that. We want to form a progressive administration, and we don't want to hark back to how you ran. And when you talk of people talking, it's forty-two down to fifteen, that's a hell of a slide down. I don't wish to ridicule, but if you're going to mix politics, I am happy to indulge you. But at the end of the day, you are where you are, and you don't have that choice. And I think if you'd have spoke to me and was more willing to talk, instead of throw stones and bricks over the fence, I'm not bothered. So, it's all about communication. The people have spoken, they've made a decision, they've created you as a smaller group now. So, you've lost a lot of time now, we're at an important stage in local government, there's lots of things coming down the line to face us, and you've put yourselves in that position. All I'm saying is, you have to communicate properly. The cynical barbing across the chamber is very much, you know, we've experienced that all through the election with the Conservative Party. But at the end of the day, we're here to sit down for the best of the people of Leicestershire. And I think we've spoke to people of similar style of thought, they want to support Leicestershire, they don't want to bicker and bicker and argue and regret, that's your style, and that's fine. But you don't get anywhere without talking. But you don't get anywhere without talking. And when you're talking now, it's too late. There was days gone by to talk. Nobody wanted to talk. You've just got your own agenda, and you're aggressively attacking it now. So that's the outcome. So it's as simple as that. No communication, no decisions. And Mr Smith's whispering, you're here to give your guidance. But anyway, there we are. That's it. So, Mr Chairman, I think it's fair and equitable. We have, we're able to make decisions. We're a new authority. We act probably different to the traditional style of total tribalism. We're able to reach across the people and make discussions. Why not? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Okay. All in favour of list two? Shall I read it again? This is, list two is that the membership of the scrutiny commission, boards and committees are set out in list two, and the chairman-elect and spokespersons named in list 3B? Just list two, sorry. List two, this one here? Okay. So I stand corrected. Okay. What we're voting on, that the membership of the scrutiny commission, boards and committees are set out in list two. And that's it. Thank you. All in favour of list two? Show of hands, please. Any against? Yes, we're carried. Thank you. Any against? No. We're carried. So where are we here? Thank you. Okay. All in favour of list 3A? Proposed by Mr Abbott.
So there are three lists, aren't there? List two has been dealt with. Just dealt with it. There's list 3A, which is the motion proposed by Mr Abbott and seconded by Mr Pugsley. We need to have a vote on that. Then there's also the list 3B, which is the one proposed by Mr Poland and seconded by Mrs Taylor. We need to have a vote on that as well. So we've done list two. We're moving on, please, to list 3A.
Did I not move an amendment, and therefore we deal with the amendment? So 3, 3B was the amendment to 3A? Is that what you just voted?
We've only voted so far on list two, and I don't think you've, you didn't move an amendment to list two. We're moving on now to 3A and 3B. We didn't vote it on, though. So I think what we'll do then is treat 3B as your amendment and take that vote first. That was, there's been no vote on that. It's been voted on list two, and we're moving now to list 3B as the amendment to... Rosemary, do you want some? Rosemary?
Point of order, please. If I could help with some clarification. List two is pages 19 to 21. We have voted on that, and they have all been approved. We're now moving on to 3A, which is the motion by the Reform group. And I believe we're now, as the monitoring officer has said, referring to list 3B as an amendment to that. So as has been said, we'll take that first, please.
Okay. All those in favour of list 3B, please? Those against?
It's 25 and 14 against. 26 against.
Okay, so carried. That's carried. Thank you. 3B lost, we're going to move on to 3A. All those in favour of list 3A, please? Yeah, all against, please? Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Okay. I think we're getting there. Mr Abbott, please.
I'd like to propose the move.
Thank you.
On this motion.
Mr Poland?
I'll second, I'll second the motion if it's here. That's where we're at, Chairman.
We're getting there. Okay. That the chief executive be authorized to make and terminate appointments to the commission committees, boards and other county council bodies, not including the cabinet, in accordance with the wishes of the political groups to whom the seat in question has been allocated. Subject in the case of those bodies set out in list two, to the group giving one day's notice to the chief executive of its wishes. All in favour? Well, no, we haven't done that.
This is motion two on page 25.
Mr Poland, yes.
Thank you. Just so I'm very, very clear on this, we are currently, I seconded motion, where are we? 12B, motion two, is that right? And that's what we're now voting on? Okay, fine.
All those in favour, please? Raise your hand. Hold them there while we count, please. All against? Motion carried. Thank you. To appoint independent members of the corporate governance committee. Report of the chief executive. Mr Abbott, please.
Yeah, I'll move that motion.
Mr Poland?
I have to second that motion.
Thank you. That Mr G Grimes and Mr J Pilgrim be appointed to serve as independent members of the corporate governance committee for a term of four years, up to the May annual council meeting in 2029. All in favour? Raise your hands. All against? That's unanimous. Thank you. To appoint church representatives to serve on the children and families overview and scrutiny committee. Report of the chief executive. Mr Abbott?
I move that motion.
Thank you. Mr Poland?
Happy to second, Mr Chair.
Thank you very much. That Canon Caroline Shaw be appointed as Church of England representative on the children and families overview and scrutiny committee, or other appropriate scrutiny committee dealing with education, for the period ending with the county council elections in 2029. All in favour? All against? Thank you very much. That's carried. To appoint parent governor representatives to serve on the children and families overview and scrutiny committee. Report of the chief executive. Mr Abbott, please.
I move that motion.
Thank you, Mr Abbott. Mr Poland?
Happy to second, Mr Chair.
Thank you. That Adina Murajad and Emily Greasley be appointed as co-opted members of the children and families overview and scrutiny committee, or other appropriate scrutiny committee dealing with education, for the period ending with the county council elections in 2029. All in favour, please? Thank you very much. Any against? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Amazingly, that can...